Welcome, everyone. There's an accident on I-75. And I cannot explain why I took I-75? I can't. I can't explain it. It was my -- I don't know what took over. But anyway, I apologize for me being tardy. I also want to say that Commissioner Fortuna was unable to make it tonight. We knew that. And we can't start without a quorum.
Oh, sorry. Can't -- I know you all heard me. So we can't start without a quorum, so I greatly apologize. Drinks are on me after the meeting. That's right. It's all worth it, isn't it? So with that, Lisa Webb, if you would briefly outline the levies that we're here for this evening, and then we will go to public comment.
Okay. We are here tonight for the Developmental Disability Services Levy and the Family Services and Treatment Levy, both planned for the November 2019 ballot. As background, the Tax Levy Review Committee began the levy process back in January, choosing consultants, and then working with agencies in both of the levies, with agency presentations, subcommittee tours of both of the levies, programming, consultant phone calls, as well as meetings throughout the next few months, culminating with the consultants' reports at the end of May, early June, at which time the TLRC scheduled public hearings on both of the levies. I've seen many familiar faces from those as well. And then the TLRC subcommittees made their recommendations to the full TLRC, both of which were approved unanimously by the TLRC at their final meeting.
... meeting at the end of June. Those reports, along with the consultant reports, were given to the commissioners in early July, at which time the public hearings were scheduled, which brings us to tonight. The commissioners need to formalize their decision for the Board of Elections and the Secretary of State by August 7th. Based on commissioner meeting schedules, at this point, that would be done at next Thursday, August 1st commission meeting. As background, what we were thinking of doing this evening is starting with the Developmental Disabilities speakers, and then moving to the Family Services and Treatment Levy speakers. If it helps, I can give some background very briefly on the Developmental Disabilities Levy review specifically, and then in between, I can come back up on the Family Services Levy, for sort of a little break in between. I will state that there are two speakers that would be presenting first on the Family Services and Treatment Levy. Due to some timing issues, they need to head out right away. But on the Developmental Disabilities Services, that levy review was requesting a flat levy renewal, which is a 4.13 mil levy. It would cost taxpayers $114.26 on their annual property taxes, and bring in approximately $73.8 million a year. The services provided in that levy are mandated and required of the county. If the levy were to fail, all of those services would need to be supplemented either through the remaining sundials within the levy, and then anything left would need to be taken care of by the county's general fund through the commissioners. Go ahead and get started.
Well, so first of all, I need to excuse Commissioner Fortuna. So I'll move that we excuse Commissioner Fortuna from the hearing.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Which two speakers have to go first?
Jackie has the cards.
Are they on the top?
Right on top.
All right. So, and generally, there is a timer, and it's right there. So you have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes as you testify. I also want to recognize that there are some members from the Tax Levy Review Committee here this evening. Would you please stand up so that we can recognize you? Are they out in the hallway?
I know Ed Herzig is here.
Okay. So thank you. We just want to say thank you. There you are. Thank you for your service. I know this is a time-intensive committee to serve on, so thanks so much for what you do. So with that, we'll go to the speakers' cards. Connie Kratzser is first. You have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I just wanted to come in and tell you all my story. I am Connie Kratzser. I spent 10 years at the Ohio Reformatory for Women. And when I got out, I came to this county, didn't know anybody, didn't have no leads, no nothing, and I was scared to death. And I was connected to the Hamilton County Reentry Office. And in that office, they have given me the tools to become a productive citizen of this county. They have helped me take in flight to stay in this county, because I am employed full-time with a company that, you know, sees me as a valuable person, not for my past mistakes, because I have learned from them. They have also connected me with my doctors and different things to help better my life. They're helping me take and find a place to live, and they're giving me my life back. So I just wanted you all to know that this program is very, very valuable to me, because it's given me back who I am, and they're a great support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Our next speaker is Carrie Norgren. Welcome.
My name is Carrie Norgren. I'm 25 years old, from Cincinnati, Ohio. I was in active addiction for about 10 years, and I've been in and out of the jails in the system pretty much my whole adult life. And where it took a turn for me was I was incarcerated in River City. I think my problem was every time I got out of jail or anything, I was always going back to the same stuff that I knew, and it wasn't a good environment. I didn't have any other way or anything else to do. So this time when I got out, I had met Dion and Trina from Hamilton County Reentry. They helped me get into a sober living house that I stayed in for about eight months. They paid for my first month's rent. They helped me get a job that I'm now currently a supervisor at, that I've been at for a year and two months. That's never happened before. I'm currently two years clean. They were a big help, because I didn't know who to reach out to, how to reach out to anybody. And they gave me all the stepping stones that I needed to get where I'm at today. I have a lot more to do, and I know that I have a very supportive system with them, and I have options and other things I can do rather than just my old ways, so.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Madam President?
Yes.
Earlier, I saw Dion and Trina somewhere. If they can stand -- oh, I see they're out in the hall.
In the back.
But I have referred several people to the reentry program, and they have been very successful with that program. So wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Alice Pavy is next.
Good evening, Commissioner Adry House, Commissioner Semer O'Dumas. We are very happy that we're able to speak to you tonight about our Hamilton County Developmental Disabilities Levy. My name's Alice Pavy. I'm the superintendent of the organization. And we are happy that we have celebrated over 50 years of support to people with developmental disabilities in Hamilton County. We have worked tirelessly on developing services that meet the needs of people and their families in this community, such as supporting babies through early intervention, operating specialized schools, satellite classrooms, and itinerant support to school districts, supporting students as they transition out of high school into services for adults, providing people with employment support so they can prepare for and find and keep jobs in order to be productive citizens. We also support people over the age of 60 as they enter their senior years, and we advocate for people to become part of their communities by embracing integration in all we do. This is accomplished by having over our service and support administrators serving over 5,000 people. Over 3,000 of them get Medicaid waivers. And if you remember, with a Medicaid waiver for every dollar, 60% comes from the federal government. So it really does stretch our levy dollars as we go forward. So we also know that we can't do it alone, and we support over 850 agency and individual providers in the community who are delivering services every day to people with developmental disabilities. Our services may look different than they did five years ago, but we are continuing our history of supporting families in the way they need. In closing, Hamilton County DD Services has been very responsible stewards of tax dollars, which is reflected in the MCM CPAs and advisors' report from the Tax Levy Review. We've made internal changes this levy cycle to save money, and those changes are positioning us to continue to provide those services families in need in the future. Remember, our services are lifelong, from babies to seniors. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Thank you, Alice.
Thank you.
Melissa Overbeck is next. Good evening.
Thank you, commissioners, for being here tonight and listening to the families who came out to speak about why the DD levy is so important to all of us. My name is Melissa Overbeck, and I am here with my husband, Rob, my daughter, Tori, my son, Robert. Tori is diagnosed with autism, anxiety, OCD, and IED, and she was a student in the Northwest School District until age 12, when it was determined that they could no longer meet her needs. After a particularly difficult day, we were told that she could not return. We didn't know what was going to happen to her. However, this would turn out to be one of the best things that had ever happened to us, because she was able to become a student at Bobby B Fairfax. At the time, we had no idea how fortunate we were, as we had no knowledge of the DDS schools. However, as Tori became acclimated to the school, we began to realize what a wonderful opportunity was in front of us. She has anxiety and sensory issues, and she's largely nonverbal. Being a part of a small school that specializes in educating students with physical, mental, emotional, and behavioral needs has been incredibly invaluable to her. If she were part of the district school, where she would go if Bobby Fairfax were not available, she would be with nearly 1,000 students. This would be overwhelming to her and would increase her inability to participate, learn, and function successfully. As a student at Bobby Fairfax, she has access to trained staff who specialize in caring for and educating students with intense special needs. She has access to speech, occupational therapy, and adaptive PE classes. She has been part of the drama classes, which makes sure that every student in the school is able to have a part in the annual performance, which is specifically created to showcase the incredible students. They also work on understanding and expressing feelings, facial expressions, and social cues. As a student at Bobby Fairfax, her reading skills have improved dramatically. Over the last couple of years, Tori has done the daily pledge of allegiance and school announcements over the intercom. She loved it, and her confidence grew. In addition to Bobby Fairfax, we've been blessed with incredible SSAs who've guided us through many hurdles and helped us apply for waivers. It is vital for families to have help with navigating all of the challenges and possible solutions for our children. Each of us brings our own unique problems, and an SSA who cares about each child and works to bring solutions to each family is incredibly important to all of us. Thank you again for your time tonight. This levy is so important for our family and for thousands of others across the county. Please vote to place the DD Service Levy on the ballot for renewal this fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael, I think it's Don Linger.
Denlinger.
Denlinger. Sorry. Ah, there we go. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here tonight as a consumer of services through Hamilton County DD Services, and I also serve on the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council. And I want to say that I've lived on my own in the community since 2003, and I've lived in the same apartment with my roommate since 2005 in Silverton. And through our waiver, through the county, we've been able to have our apartment modified to suit our needs. And I've been able to be an active, strong advocate for individuals with disabilities, including myself and so many others, and with the great people that I have the pleasure to work with in the county. And I've been able to accomplish so much, and if it weren't for them, I wouldn't have been able -- if it weren't for them and their support, I wouldn't have been able to make the great State of Ohio DD Council, where I'm able to reach a broader audience and serve more individuals with disabilities. And I urge you and implore you to renew the funding for DD Services and continue it, because I want to see the babies and the children that we serve, and other young adults and older adults alike grow to become the great and powerful advocates like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Julian Robb.
First of all, I want to thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to speak to you tonight. As a provider of services for individuals with developmental disabilities, first of all, I want to apologize for my attire. I was just telling Commissioner O'Dumas that I just left a picnic, which was an appreciation picnic, for our individuals that we serve, and also for our staff and their families, because we know the sacrifices that they make on a regular basis. So I wanted to make sure that I also was here, because I understand the importance of this levy being placed on the ballot. The board that we work with right now, the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services, they make a tremendous impact in our community. I mean, we've, right now, I've been in the field for over 20 years, and I've seen the impact that it's made, just having individuals now be gainfully employed members of the community. In fact, one of the professional highlights I've had was just this year, helping a young lady fill out taxes for the first time, and she was so excited. And I told her --
We love that about her.
Yeah, that's what I said. That'll change.
Can she please testify?
But that's the -- but because of the services that Developmental Disabilities that they provide, this helped, really, the family, and actually helped this young lady become healthier in their whole environment. It's making a significant impact on our community, and just even the way that we look at individuals with developmental disabilities. It's about inclusion. And without Hamilton County and the hard work that these people do, that it would make a tremendous impact on a lot of family members. I have a family member that has developmental disabilities. I understand what it's like as a family member and the impact that they have. So once again, I cannot urge you enough how much we actually need this levy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Lee Alexander is next. And in the batter's box is Lynn Callaway.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Leah Alexander. I receive support from Hamilton County DD Services. After working for many years, I wanted to explore other parts of my life, and I became interested in art. I have friends who are artists and visited places where I could look at art. Today, I'm an artist. I've also learned to make jewelry and design t-shirts. Tax levy dollars help pay for my art program at Visionaries and Voices. I get to decide what I want to paint or draw, and I get to determine the outcome. My art has been in shows. Two pieces have been even sold. Please make sure our levy is on the ballot for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Callaway is next.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. And thank you for having us here this evening, commissioners. That young lady was my sister, Leah, and she has mentioned everybody in the room earlier. She's my younger sister. But I'm here today as a sibling, supporting someone with a developmental disability, one of many, a growing number of people who are in the same position. I'm no longer partnering with my parents to deliver the supports to my sister that are needed as they pass on. Again, as a boomer sib, there are so many of us in the same situation. My job as Leah's sister is to safeguard her vision, the vision that my parents established for her. They did an excellent job of laying a foundation for her life, sort of setting that direction. DD Services has really helped us to maintain that direction. Leah has, as she said -- I'm going to give you some history leading up to where she is today. She lived at home with my parents and wanted her own place. DD Services, after my parents agreed to look into them, made it possible for her to have an advocate to help that happen for her. So she lived in her own apartment. DD Services made it possible then for her to have funding, so that she would have the necessary supports to live more independently, as my parents were less able to. DD Services made it possible for my sister to maintain the job that she found that -- or that -- sorry, that another system found, but DD Services made it possible for her to maintain that employment for 10 years, which is phenomenal, and she's held other jobs. What Leah then benefited from through DD Services was their advocacy team, which has been in place for many years. And through her participation with this group, she found her voice. Does that mean I have to go? Okay. She's found her voice. She's no longer working. She is an artist, or she's working, but she's earning money as an artist. Not much, but she's living the life that she's chosen. So I'd like to thank DD Services for the supports for her to find the life that she's desired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is S.L. Hannan, and David O'Brien will follow her.
Good evening, and thank you. We have a little show and tell.
Very good.
Diana's so sweet to help me out. I appreciate it. My name is Sharon Hannan. I'm the marketing director for Ohio Valley Goodwill Industries. And for more than 30 years, we have worked in partnership with Hamilton County DDS. In that time, and more than estimated 15,000 individuals with developmental disabilities have received employment, training, and personal development services through Goodwill. The board's mission has always been to help people to live, work, and play in their home communities, and their ongoing partnerships with agencies like Goodwill have helped to achieve that mission of service for thousands of Hamilton County residents. While Hamilton County DDS is very proactive in accessing needed services as determined by the individuals they serve, the board has always demonstrated a fiscally conservative approach to its efforts and the exploration of natural supports as appropriate. Annually, Hamilton County DDS serves more than 5,000 individuals with developmental disabilities in Hamilton County, and Goodwill is proud to serve approximately 500 of those individuals annually through its employment and training programs, as well as its award-winning Center for Advocacy -- I'm sorry -- Recreation and Education Care Program. The care program is a community integration program which focuses not only on social involvement, but also on volunteering. Hamilton County DDS was instrumental in the design and implementation of this important program, as well as all of its services for people with developmental disabilities. While it's important to note the scope of Hamilton County DDS's services, as well as its agency partnerships and meeting its missions, it's always helpful to meet some of the people whose lives are impacted directly. And this is where Diana and I do our floor show. So people like Andrew Clark, who was a participant in our work-training program, and then decided he wanted a community job. Now, working as a greeter at Sam's Club, Andrew is a major sports fan and says he feels better about himself because he's contributing more to society when he works. And then we have Jerry Kenebrew, who works at Planet Fitness. And Jerry says, "People are nice to me at work. I am nice back, and they smile. I like seeing smiles." Jerry's mom notes, "This job has given him some newfound purpose, and I'm truly grateful for it." And then Rachel, Rachel Rickert, who loves her job at McDonald's. "I like to stay busy, and I get to try a lot of neat new things I never thought I would be able to try. I work so many hours here, which is great. I have friends here, and I got to open my own bank account with all the money I make." And then finally, Neil Williams, who works at Walmart and who, supervisor indicates, is a wonderful employee and always happy. Neil says, "I love my job and want to thank Goodwill for helping me." Thank you. These are just a few of the many stories of personal success which are made possible through the support of Hamilton County DDS and their invaluable partnerships with Ohio Valley Goodwill. We encourage the Tax Levy Review Committee and the commissioners to approve Hamilton County DDS's levy request for the November ballot. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David O'Brien, followed by Michael Flannery. Good evening.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. Our family is comprised of my wife, Diana, myself, and our 24-year-old triplets, who at approximately age three were all diagnosed with autism. The challenges have been great and continuous. All of our children are very limited in verbal communication. Andrew has never spoken a word. His sister Kelly is similar, but she prefers, instead of using the adaptive devices Andrew has, she prefers to use a stencil board. She's her own personality, and she's a very good speller. And the sister Megan has some limited ability to converse. But with age comes new challenges, and toddler training was a very difficult period, took a considerable period of time, however. But one of the most challenging experiences has been puberty. And now we're dealing with their adult life transition. So programs like Future Is Now and Home Think Tank that the county runs are invaluable. They give me great insight into some of the considerations one needs to have as they plan their children's future. My wife and I have dedicated ourselves to not allowing autism to define who we are as a family or as individuals. Indeed, we have been tremendously blessed by the continued support of loved ones and the dedicated staff of Hamilton County DD Services. In great part because of that support, we have -- our foundation, Impact Autism, has been able to support initiatives to provide programming services for the more severely autistic adult population. This is a program at the University of Cincinnati, and it's called Impact Innovation. It is part of the university's Adult Transitional Services Division, and we consider it as an example of paying it forward. The time and energy to take these initiatives is a direct result of the support and hope that the levy has provided. You know, Hamilton County DD Services is a resource for services, information, programming, and networking. And I could just tell you, it's been invaluable to us, so please continue the support the families need.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is Michael Flannery, and after that is Mashad Metz.
Thank you for the opportunity. Not long ago, I was at Lou Rose's call center. And you can imagine what that is. It's a room full of people at computers, typing with headsets on, taking our orders for large cheese pizzas and calzones. And there's one gentleman I met there who was taking orders just like everybody else, who had been there 10 years, and who didn't have any arms. He was typing with his feet. He got the job through DDS and was helped with his workstation by Goodwill. He's making money. He's paying taxes. That's what DDS does. My daughter was born with Down Syndrome. If she was born, you know, 10, in the '70s, we would have been told to institutionalize her. Instead, with early intervention, my daughter was reading before she went to nursery school. She was getting her hair cut and saw a "Help Wanted" sign and asked for an application and filled it out for a salon assistant. She got the job. She was eligible for a job coach from Goodwill. The job coach came, and the job that she had originally was simple, to sweep up the floors. And the job coach saw what other things around the place she could do. Before she started the job, I forgot this part, the salon was sold, so the person who gave her a job wasn't there anymore. And the new owner said, "Okay, she can come, but only for the summer. It is just a summer job." At the end of the summer, she was given a raise and asked to stay because of her job coach who taught her and because of DDS. Now, Goodwill, I can give you some numbers on Goodwill, is that we were a positive economic impact of $70 million locally. And we're one provider, and DDS has 850 And we're one provider, and DDS has 850 providers. It's a good investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. I, is there someone with the last name of Metz here? I mispronouncing the.
It's Michael.
Is it Michael? Okay. I'm sorry, I just could not read it. And Nestor Melink is following Michael. Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
A few pictures to go along with.
Thank you. It's Melnick. Get all these names wrong.
Hi. Like I said, my name is Michael Metz, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight. Tonight, I'm here to speak a little bit of why the levy is so important to myself, the families that I serve, and the individuals that my program serves. I am the owner of Metz Core Adult Day, it's an Adult Day program on the west side of Cincinnati. For myself, the levy has absolutely changed my life. In 2016, I had been working for the county for about six years or so, and my wife and I had a dream of starting our own program. That became, you know, not only that it would be a program for, you know, our guys to have fun and a safe environment to grow and become more independent, but also a program that offered so many opportunities for them that they could really find what it is that is their niche and what is their purpose in life. So, and, so the HCDDS funding has given my wife, our team, and myself the opportunity to make a difference in a lot of people's lives. And we get to work in a place that our job is to love and be loved. This journey has been one of the biggest blessings in our life, and a huge part of why it's possible is the levy funding. As far as a, as a parent's perspective, this, this funding is crucial, I mean, for their lives. The parents that I work with every day, and, you know, and I'll step back a little bit. Two years ago, we started with, you know, one person we were providing for. Now, our fa-, our second family is what we call it. We're up to about, providing for about 60 individuals right now. And each of those parents have, have learned and learned that how crucial this is for them, you know. I'm sorry. So I'll try to wrap this up quickly. But, so, as far as that goes, you know, the levy provides for services so that, you know, the parents can actually go and work and not have to stay home and take care of their children. Live a normal life to where it's not just them and their children and a small group of family, that, that's all they're seeing all the time, their, their child. You know, in my program, you know, they, they get to go to a program where they get to make friends. They get to, if you look at the paper there, they get to do all these different opportunities to find what it is that is important to them in life. And for, for a few examples, and I'll kind of try to wrap it up here a little bit, a few examples is, we have Kyle. He's in our woodworking program, never touched anything woodworking in his life. He's our, like, master sander now. He takes pride in every product he makes and gets to sell and goes around. Nicole is, she does string art for us and is a beautiful, makes beautiful pieces of art. And Brandon, he's a, he's a big portion of, we have a program that we work with called Childhood Food Solutions, that they package a bunch of food for, and, and we actually deliver it to the community for underprivileged children. Brandon is a huge portion of why we get so many out. In a month, we've delivered about 1,000 packages to underprivileged children in the community. So each, each person in our program is offered all these different opportunities so that they can find what it is in their purpose in life, and that is because of the levy.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And there is an art sale evidently going on.
Yeah. Put a list of that in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave that up here in case anybody's, and I know Visionary and Voices also has art sales. I've got a piece of art from Visionary and Voices in my kitchen. Truly a nice piece of art. So anyway, I'll leave that up here for everybody. All right, Nestor, I mispronounced your last name too, so Nestor Melnick. And then Diana Melrose is following Nestor. Yeah, let's see. There it is. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us this evening. First of all, I'm gonna do this for you. So I'm moving the mic earlier. I am a parent of a son with disabilities, a 20-year-old with disabilities. I've been involved in advocacy and trying to affect policy for a very long time. I could talk about the success stories and all the things that we do for the individuals and the people that we serve, but I really want to focus a little bit on a different reason of why we do what we do. And Michael Flannery touched upon the investment part of it. You know, we serve some of our most vulnerable population, many of whom who cannot advocate for themselves, let alone have somebody advocate for them. They often don't have the capacity to fend for themselves and to support themselves. We have many innovative and creative ways that we can support individuals through DED Services, but we have to remember that we have a moral obligation to do something. With that, what that something is can certainly be debated, and we often talk about things like supports and services and safety nets. But my contention is that we need to look at what we do more as an investment and not support services and safety nets. A safety net may keep you alive, but it doesn't do anything to propel you forward. It doesn't help you reach your goals, it doesn't help you live a full and meaningful life. That's why the levy and all the subsequent programs and services of the agency that the levy supports are critical. DED Services doesn't just serve immediate needs, but it looks at the long run. On an individual level, services are tailored to individual needs, not only supporting the individual, but using resources where they are most effective, not just because they are available. At an agency level, partnering with other agencies and services allows us to provide more bang for your buck. It's cost-effective, it provides better and more services, and they're more appropriate services. We know that with changing demographics, we have increasing incident rates, so we have more young people coming into the system. We also have people living longer and aging longer, so our services need to stretch further. Our demand for services increase. So we're looking at providing the right services at the right time so that we can have compounding benefits. And so with that, I'm seeking your support, continued support of the levy and the work of the agency.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Diana, you're next. Can you get it? Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Just real fast, I promise. This month, we had our third Project STORE training. Project Store stands for Steps toward Independence and Responsibility. It is a train-to-trainer approach, and I am one of the trainers throughout the state of Ohio. This training was really unique because we had a variety of people of all abilities, and the ally, which consisted of family and friends and those who were important to them. I had to learn a new skill, and it was speaking with a sign maker in Topo Dome. We had one young lady who was deaf, who was very, very shy, but by the third day, she spoke up so many times. That is why our levy is important, not, advocacy comes in different forms, and I truly believe that each and every day because I see it. And we also had a staff member from Sioux Casa came, and she participated in the training as well. So we had to learn about culture, about sci-, about how to communicate with people with different needs, and they learned how to be a leader. And we have some great new young members on our, that will hopefully teach others what they learn and have their community voice be heard. I just want to end with one little thing. Next year, I'm getting married, and, and I'm very excited for my fiancee to move here. So my life has been busy, writing, planning, working, training, and traveling. But with the help of DED Services, I can do it all. Thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations. What's his name?
Going back to say his name.
Um, his name is TJ. He lives in Adams County.
All right.
So with the help from DED Services, he's moving up here shortly.
Nice. Nice work. Nice work. All right. Thank you all for being here. This is always very moving, and thank you so much for all that you do, all of those that are in the room from DED Services, providing these services every day. We're so grateful. So we're gonna transition now to the next set of speakers' cards, which is the Family Services Levy. Lisa, are you gonna come back, back up very quickly before we transition? And feel free to, I don't know if you all would like to stay or go, but feel free to leave if you'd like. We'll give you a minute here to pop out. And again, I apologize for starting late. Let's go ahead and get started with the second part of the hearing.
All right. The Family Services and Treatment Levy provides treatment services within the county's criminal justice system. The levy is being requested or being recommended as a renewal levy at .34 mils, which is $9.84 per $100,000 home, and generates just $6.2 million a year for these services. It's actually our smallest countywide levy. The levy subcommittee that did the review was actually chaired by Dr. Ed Herzig, who's here this evening listening in. A key point that I would make in this levy, being that it is very small at $6.2 million without a lot of carryover balance, is that the levy projections with flat funding is actually a situation where, a term that we've used several times, flat is not flat. The key reasoning for that being that the levy and the outlying years, as is typical with a lot of levies, is spending more than it's bringing in annually in revenue. Revenue over the five-year period is fixed. Expenditures tend to go up, just as costs go up. So what happens when you renew the levy flat? It will continue to stay flat funding $6.2 million a year, but programs may have to take in the range of a 4% to 5% reduction if we were to do it across the board in service levels to be able to continue all of the functions within the levy. We're working with the Commissioners currently now and probably all the way through the budget process to figure out what that will actually mean to the various services within the levy, all of which were highly recommended by the Tax Levy Committee to be continued.
Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Our first speaker is Tom Sinan, I'm sorry, Chief Tom Sinan, who will be followed by Reverend Donald Jones.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Chief Tom Sinan of Newtown County Heroine Coalition. This community, this county, and this coalition has literally changed the conversation on how we view and deal with addiction. We have been on the forefront realizing that we cannot punish addiction out of someone, and that not only is the individual, but also the family and the community is better served when we look at longer-term solutions and treatment. And what we're trying to do, or what we need to be doing, is looking at this issue as at longer-term, solve the backend solutions. I send a lot of meetings and hear people talk about the low-hanging fruit. I tend to disagree with that. One of those low-hanging fruits we often hear of is that law enforcement should be the ones that deal with these issues, just take people to jail. That is not what ends up solving this. You heard from a couple people tonight already, I'm sure you'll hear from others, those success stories are our guidance that let us know that when we invest in people, we're investing in our families, we are investing in our communities. Not only are we saving lives, we're making the community healthier, healthier, but we are also benefiting financially. Often, we don't want to take that time to go to the long-term services, but we, when we invest like this levy does with those resources, what it does is it allows us to invest in people. We in law enforcement should be that connection to those resources, and we should be the ones that advocate for those long-term solutions. So I thank you for having me here tonight and support this levy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Reverend Donald Jones is next, followed by Sean Moke.
Thank you to our Commissioners. I have the privilege to serve on this committee for Family Services Treatment Levy, and I'm also the pastor of Greater New Hope Missionary Baptist Church in Avondale. And I'm here to say to you, it's needful to continue these services. Treatment for addiction is something that's not only local in Hamilton County, but it's a national problem. And there's so many people that benefit from the support of these services compared to other alternatives, prevention programs, and interventions funded by the levy. It's a very good investment. Of course, being a preacher, I'm in the healing and the recovery business spiritually, and members of my congregation have been blessed to have these services available to them. I also have members of my congregation who works in the field of psychiatry, as well as my son works for the Talbot House in this area of support. So I'm here as not only a taxpayer and a community leader, but I'm also here to say to you, this is a very needed program, and I wish you would continue to support it. And God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean Moke, there he is. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sean Moke, and yeah, I just, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and speak tonight. So, you know, really, I just have a good extensive history of my childhood until my adulthood of, you know, drug use, especially heroin and crack. And, you know, it, I had an experience with a program that was funded by this levy, and that was the ADAPT program, which is a Talbot House program. And, you know, if it weren't for that, I wouldn't be standing here today. I truly believe that I would have died in the streets of Cincinnati, and that's, that's against my own will. And because of the programs offered, you know, I was able to get sober against my own will. And that was, you know, a super big turnaround in my life. My sobriety date's May 21st, 2015, and for that, I'm truly, truly grateful. But, you know, I've been in recovery for that long. It's been a little bit over four years now. I just got a new home. I just got a new job. I've been able to, you know, work at the same job for the last four years, and I'm grateful for that. And, you know, and another thing is, I get to be a part of my family's lives today, which I isolated for years and years. And if it weren't for the ADAPT facility and their, their staff there and the probation officers and Judge Burke, who is also, you know, a big part of that, who knows where I would be. I mean, I truly believed that I would be dead by the time I was 25, and here I am, 27 years old. And again, that was against my own will, of Judge Burke kind of putting me into that position where I had the opportunity to grow again and to, to be a part of society and a part of my family's lives. And, you know, it's just like one of these things that you don't really think too much about, and you just kind of like write it off, but this levy played the most important role in my life, in my family's life, and I know that my mom, my sister, my niece, my brothers, my father, and they're all very grateful for the opportunity that was provided to me of drug court and, and being able to, you know, be a part of society once again. So again, thank you, and I look forward to working with you guys to help pass this renewal in the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your story. Deb Robison is next, followed by Angela Pacella.
I'm with ASAP Norwood, which is a local substance abuse prevention coalition here in Norwood, and we've been both a recipient and good steward of funding from the Family Services and Treatment Tax Levy dollars. Our coalition has received these dollars by way of the Prevention First mini-grants, as well as Talbot House prevention dollars. Through Prevention First, we've received funding to train young people to develop, to develop prevention skills, prevention leadership skills. This past year, we utilized our mini-grant funding to host a community forum on intergenerational prevention strategies. My friend Angela will say more about that. Additionally, we've launched a middle school program called Teens Empowering Community Change that's delivered through Talbot House and their funding, they use funding from these tax dollars to provide that program. We began our youth programs in earnest in 2012. Our student drug use survey data shows us that in 2012, our students report peer disapproval of drug use at 56.5%. In 2016, that rose to 69.5%. We believe this is due to our heavy emphasis on youth life prevention programming, which is all funded through levy dollars.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to follow up on that. With the Prevention First forum, the mini-grant that we got, we did a forum in the community, which we then created a program that went from homes to churches to community centers, and that was a way to spread the message that no one is destined for substance abuse. So we- So we created that program and brought it out into the community, and we got a grant to do that of $5,000. So from that mini-grant, that seeded the money to become, we bore fruit with it. So I brought with me the curriculum for the program, it's the facilitator's guide, plus all of the information that was shared at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Our next speaker is Patty Smith. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to share with you what the tech program has meant to our family. Our grandson entered the Norwood Middle School as a seventh grader last fall. As all parents, we were a little worried about how the transition would go from the smaller elementary to the big world of junior high. We know all parents have some apprehension with sending their kids off into the world, but with the potential risk factor of him having addictive genes, we were downright terrified. We were worried about how he would meet and make new friends. Our grandson is not an athlete, so he did not have the benefit of continuing on sports teams where he would have a ready-made friends group. We were concerned about him choosing any new ones wisely without some group or club to allow him the opportunity to meet people. He is great with relationships with adults, but he tends to be shy with kids his age. Right before the start of the school year, we were at a meeting at our church where this program was being presented to the group. We were so excited and wanted to hear everything about it, and then immediately signed him up. It was an answer to our prayers. The Norwood Teen Empowerment Group has been wonderful for him, and we were very grateful for it. It has given him a place to be three times per week where the kids are guided and supervised, giving us peace of mind. It has offered discussion groups on topics important to their age level, opportunities to give back to their community, and fun times such as meeting at Paper Street, a neighborhood business that has allowed them to gather there on Friday afternoons to play foosball, again, under supervision. They even went to Lexington last spring for a tournament where they were the only kids group in the competition. They were welcomed with opened arms, and the support shown to them by their adult competitors was overwhelming. Most importantly for my grandson, it has given him a place where he can share his story and not be judged. Every child should be able to count on their parents being there for them, but sadly, too many don't. To find out that he is not alone, and to be supported and to be able to offer support for others in his same position, has allowed him to grow and given him so much confidence. This is the one place where he feels safe to open up. He trusts the supervisors and he respects them. He really enjoys being a part of this group, and we enjoy and appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the chaperone committee, which allows us to get to know his friends. We found through raising our own two boys that no matter how much love and support they are given at home, it just isn't enough. We have learned firsthand that it takes the proverbial village to raise kids, especially in today's world. While succeeding in school is a very high expectation and priority for us, our first priority is keeping him off drugs and alcohol. This group offers him, as well as us, even more tools to help us achieve that. They have been a very important part of our village, and we could never thank them enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. All right, our next speaker's card has two names on it. They're written very small, so I'll do my best. I think it's Leah Merritt and Jasmine Muller?
Not at all.
Not at all. Please come forward and just introduce yourselves. How about that?
I tend to have a very big problem with small writing.
Welcome.
Okay, well, I'm Jasmine, as you know, and this is Leah, and we're here to just speak a little bit about what the tech group has done personally for us and what they have done for the community as well.
Basically, tech is a group that puts positivity into the community and helps to persuade young people to not get involved with harmful habits and drug abuse. Some kind of benefits that we've had is, we have done a couple things, as Patty has mentioned, we went to Lexington, which helped us, we got involved with a lot more people that were interested in something that we were interested in, so it helped us feel a little bit more comfortable about being in that part of the community. And we also went to Miami University recently and spoke in front of a large group of people, and this kind of thing that we have done has helped us to be more comfortable with being a leader to certain topics, and it's helped us be more comfortable with speaking. Another example of this is when we did things like, we went around our community and we passed out Valentines for community members so that they would know that they are appreciated and that they are known by our community.
I was going to speak on individual benefits, and I was going to say that most of the kids in tech have spoke about how it has helped them to find who they truly are, but after hearing some of the things that people have said, I personally want to say that for me, it was a big step for me, as my family has a very difficult background and a suicidal past. And a few years before I started junior high, I had lost my cousin to suicide, and these kind of things have been really hard on my family and on me. Going into tech, going into tech gave me a place where I could connect with other kids and share my story and my past and feel comfortable and supported by others, and it gave me a place to reach out, as when I entered junior high, I was getting really depressed and I started going into my suicidal phase. I started cutting, and I was not doing very good, well with my health. And tech, I was able to open up there, and all the kids kind of helped me and brought me back to a more loving and happy life, so I'm thankful for tech. I could say it saved my life. Thank you for your time.
So both of you did a very nice job, so thank you so much for bringing that perspective. It's really important.
Yes.
All right. Our next speaker's card also has two names on it, Glenda Turner and Valerie Mock. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Want to go first? My name's Glenda. I'm Serena's grandmother. Tech has really helped bring her out of her shell. She was an outgoing child. I don't know when things changed, but she started being withdrawn, she was happy to be in her room by herself, but tech has given her the social skills, the smiles again, knowing that there's other kids that she can relate to, and the group just brings me to tears when I hear about all the changes, because I see the positive in her, and I've also seen the positive in them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same here. As you heard, Jasmine Madden is my daughter. It pretty much saved her life. If I hadn't had a, they hadn't had this group, what would have happened? I might have lost her. I don't even want to think, so we really don't want to lose this program, and I thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. You're good. Our next speaker is Don Evans.
Good evening, Commissioners and fellow citizens of Hamilton County. I come as a representative of the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, and specifically someone who works in support services, corrections, classification, social services, and inmate programs. And I think, well, spoiler alert, we're in favor of the continuation of this levy. I think sometimes a question for us, working within the jail, is why are people incarcerated? And we don't really have the luxury to get into long debates about why they're there, but one of the things we can ask, and one of the things that we can address, is what do we do with those who are incarcerated? And I'm glad that the word "family" is attached to this levy, because everyone incarcerated is part of a family. Everyone incarcerated will be released to a family. So what do we do in the meantime? And yes, some could argue that there are those people that we can't reach with treatment and reentry services. So the best we can do is continue to reach as many as possible. Two years ago, we partnered with Talbert House to start a female recovery pod, and it's been hard work, because anyone that works in the area of addiction and recovery knows that it's tough, and that success stories are kind of hard to define. But what I would say is, we want to continue that work, and support of the levy allows organizations like Talbert House to continue the work that we've been doing. I've been with the Sheriff's Department since 1991, started as a corrections officer, and Talbert House was there. A few years ago, we also began a partnership with the Hamilton County Office of Reentry, which starts off by going into the jail to begin building relationships to help inmates overcome the hurdles and the obstacles, and believe me, there are many, that face them when they return as a citizen. So again, reiterating what I said, we're in support of the levy because it allows us to continue our work with the recovery pod, the exit pod, a veterans' pod, and it allows us to at least have a vision moving forward to do jail a little bit differently than we've done it since I started back in 1991. Again, I thank everyone for your time.
Yeah, thanks for coming in. So our next speaker's card is Judge Nadine Allen, but I don't see Nadine. Is she gone?
I think we're with Nadine.
Okay, oh, okay, great, thank you. All right. Camaria Tahimba is the next card. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak, and thank you Reverend Jones for coming out as well. That's my pastor. I am Camaria Tahimba, Dr. Tahimba, and I am a psychologist. I'm also an independently licensed social worker, who has dedicated my career to helping people struggling with addiction, and also, unfortunately, some of those folks have found themselves a part of the criminal justice system. You have heard from people in recovery, and our audience tonight is filled with people in recovery, some for short periods of time, some for long periods of time. We have peer supporters, we have caring professionals and family members. Everyone will not have the opportunity to speak tonight, but we collectively want to show that the taxpayer's investment is appreciated and is life-saving. These levy-funded programs have made a difference for us, for our families, for employers, and our community, and I want to thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right. Well, that was the last of the speaker's cards, and so I just, again, on behalf of the Commission, want to thank you all for coming out. It's so important that we hear your voices related to what exactly this means to families, so thank you so much for bringing it home for us. As you heard, the timeframe is, I think, beginning of August for a vote from the Commission as to whether or not to put this on the ballot in November. I know the Commission has been very supportive in the past. Commissioner Portune, of course, was part of that, and he sends his regards, so we will make a decision. I'm not going to speak for us, but I do think we look very favorably on these levies. It's very hard not to, after the testimony we've heard and the impacts that we've heard. So thanks again for being here. Do we need to do anything further, Jeff?
No, not yet.
Okay, great. Then I will move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here.